Good, good.
Don't jinx it.
Pull that up on my phone so I can watch it.
It's not there yet.
Brayden, how did your Halloween thing go? Brayden?
Immuted, Brayden.
It went good. I was, I was on a different screen trying to, trying to answer an email real quick and I was like, oh, I gotta find my mute button. Ah, it went really good.
Looked like you had quite the crew all dressed up and everything. Sorry I didn't make it.
Yeah, it'll be even better next year. You'll have to come next year.
Alright.
You can work on it if you want.
We had all the grandkids here running through the orchard. We had a haunted orchard behind the house, so.
Oh, that's probably awesome.
That's why I didn't make it.
Yeah, that's got.
Things were great.
That's got, that haunted orch- orchard's got a lot of potential.
Especially if you get those bees pissed off, Brent. That'd make life really exciting. What's that?
Are you gonna leave the bees all winter or?
If that's okay, we'd like to.
Sure. Nobody goes back there, so it's up to you.
They're pretty calm right now. At night, I doubt they'd come out. You'd really have to get them upset.
Yeah, they don't bother anybody here, so that would be great. And we're fine with that.
Still no Bart.
You, no Bart?
No.
Well, it's 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome each of you here this evening. Uh, for the record, all city council members are present with the exception of Councilor Stevens, uh, who hasn't joined us yet. Uh, I've asked, uh, Councilor Ellis, to give our pledge, or to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, uh, in our city council meeting. Public comment? Do we have any public comment that anyone's aware of this evening?
I don't have any emails. Nobody's here and nothing on YouTube.
Okay, thank you, Shelly. Okay, uh, move on to the... May come back to the mayor's report. Uh, we'll move on to consent items first. Uh, consideration approved the meeting minutes. Do you have any changes or corrections to the minutes this evening?
Mayor, I have, uh, something. I don't... So, on, uh, number six, talking about the discussion of the setbacks for the Old Mill subdivision, um, on the second paragraph, there, it says, "Councilmember Arnold stated that he does not fee," and that's probably feel.
Yes, sorry. So Brayden actually sent me that, so that has been fixed.
Oh, okay. And then, it, it also says that I didn't feel that I had, or that the council has the authority to interrupt the establishment for a contractor. And I, I don't know what that means. I probably said it, but I don't know what it means. So, if, if, I'm just saying established policy or whatever the establishment, I, I mean, like I said, I probably said it, but I, I don't know what it means, so. If it's good, it's okay. I just, it, whatever.
I've never done anything like that. I don't even know what that's like.
So, I, I think it was something to do with the, the established, uh, process or, or something like that. So if I can clear it up this week instead of, whatever. Anyway, that's all I had.
That's fine, thank you. I saw the comment, but I thought maybe you were speaking a different language. Something there, so.
It, it comes out like that sometimes.
I think it does for all of us, so. Okay, uh, any other changes or corrections?
Okay. I, I can see, uh, the owner is on our meeting now. Is that Bart? Let's join us?
Course.
Okay.
I have a comment. Maybe it was already caught in the pre, um, in the work meeting. It says that Roger Worthland is there. He wasn't. Uh, but the, the main one, uh, is on, in the minutes from the meeting, in discussing, uh, is it 2020, 23, right at the end, it talks about, um, a motion being done. Anyway, it, it, there's a paragraph, "Mayor Cheryl asked Steve Brooks, City Attorney, if a motion to appoint as a city administrator could be made tonight." Anyway, and then that talks about the motion. Now, in the minute, or in the tape, there, from about a minute seven to about a minute, I'm sorry, one hour and seven minutes to one hour and eighteen minutes, is a discussion concerning, uh, the motion to table, and then there was a motion for consent. Now, maybe having the consent in minutes is not important, but I, I kinda think it is and it should be there, and it's not.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing, motion that is there is the motion to table, the contract, but there was nothing about the consent of, of, uh, appointment or hiring. Anyway.
I know we asked, Mr. Brooks, if we could go back and do that. I think we agreed, but I don't recommend without listening to it.
Okay, we did it. There was a motion, uh, because basically it's on the agenda item, but it's towards the beginning. Um, I don't have my agenda from last time. And Mr. Brooks said that, um, Brad Mitchell asked that the consent of the appointment be moved. Now, why it was different than the contract, I don't know. But it was. And, but having that in the minutes, I think, is, is important. If you don't agree, don't, don't bother with it. But I'm, until it's there, I'd kinda think it's, it's relevant.
Was it on the recording, Bart, or was?
Oh, absolutely.
Excuse me?
Absolutely, it was.
Okay, then it should be on there.
There was, there were two motions, one to table and one to, uh, appoint. All the discussion and the motion and the vote on the appointment are not in the minutes.
Back to the consent item earlier.
Yeah, I think it's up on the consent item.
Yeah, it's on the consent item.
But it was not dealt with. It was dealt with, oh, in the, in the minutes? Anyway, you can determine it.
You'll have to, yeah, look at that, will you, Shane Williams?
Because it doesn't show in the minutes that the new city administrator that was voted on. I didn't, there was, anyway, you can determine.
Okay. Cause I remember we did that, and yeah, he was voted on in the consent item.
Oh, that, it's not reflected.
Right, and it should be. You're absolutely right. Will you look at that, Shane Williams?
Uh, one hour and seven minutes to one hour and eighteen minutes.
There it, Mayor, there is that, in the consent item section of the minutes, there is that, uh, motion and a note that it passed with a record of the vote.
It is in the minutes?
Yes, it's in the minutes, in the consent item section, because that's where the line item was.
Yeah, we did go back to it.
Okay, so she just doesn't have it in, in sequence. She put it in sequence to the agenda, but not sequence to the, of, of the minutes.
When it happened.
Of actual events of the, of the, okay.
Mike could just show we went back, but we did, we did go back to that consent item to do that, so. Okay, move on to the action items. Uh, first one's consideration of ordinance 927, approving the updates on previous ordinance to meet term water demand requirements. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you can hear me. So, the only reason why I was doing this, uh, some of the proposed future.
We're having a hard time here, just trying.
Can you hear me now?
I think so.
I have a train going by, so. So I had Johnson Associates, look at our water usage and what the proposed developments that could be coming. I think we need to update this so that they bring the appropriate amount of water with them, rather than having the citizens have to buy additional water. Um, and I think this is close. I think, well, you know, we still need to do some, as soon as going forward, as far as storage and maybe revisit this again and look at it, maybe, you know, with the council and the mayor. But I think this gets us closer and it kinda protects us a little bit with some of the maybe, you know, more dense populations that could be coming, that they bring water.
Okay. This, uh, we talked about this before. I thought we started doing this. It's just never been in black and white, right?
Well, we were doing it, it was just at a lower rate. So this is just changing the rate of water that they bring with.
I see, okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Douglas on this item? Okay. Move on to action item two, consideration of resolution 2023 to approve employment contract for the Riverdale City Administrator. As you remember, this item was tabled last, uh, in our last meeting. Uh, there was discussion on, uh, the contract. I know some of the council members had some recommendations for the contract, maybe how it should be written versus how it's been in the past for a long time, and, uh, I thought some of those suggestions were really pretty good, and uh, Mr. Kobe was al- also very willing to, uh, negotiate the contract, so uh, that's been done. Uh, I, I know he got a copy from his, uh, previous employer, and I know that, uh, Stacy Comall looked at that, worked that, and I think she's worked it with Steve. I'm sure she has, and, uh, so that contract's back more, uh, back before you tonight, uh, when we discuss that in the, uh, city council meeting that's been tabled, so we'll have to have a motion to remove it from the table, so you might just uh, make sure we do that. So, is there any, is there any questions on the contract as it's written now for this meeting?
Hi, Mayor, I have a couple of... Um, I don't, I don't wanna get in, into it too much again. You know, I'm not crazy about contracts to begin with, but, um, I did have a, a couple of questions about, uh, 2.3. It talks about performance bonuses. And I'm just kinda looking for some clarification on what a performance bonus would be in a government role as a city administrator, what we'd be looking for. Puts it in there. Also, 3.4, uh, the vehicle allowance for $450 a month. That, that allowance started years ago when the city administrator was actually given a car, and that, that car was misused. Uh, the city administrator's wife was driving it, so they changed it to a cit- to a car allowance. And I think, I think that's just excessive. Um, 7.1A talks about the, the salary can't be reduced unless it's reduced for all employees. And I think that hamstrings us a little bit when we're looking at just in the future. I don't, I mean, I don't know what it's gonna be, uh, in the future, what our tax base is gonna be in the future, something like that. But when it's for all employees, I think we should look at it for all, like, management employees or something like that. Um, 7.1D, it says that the, the ci- if the city fails to renew the contract, um, that this, the clause goes into effect where we have to pay kind of a severance fee. Um, I, I think, again, that hamstrings the city for any purpose, even if the contract isn't renewed or something like that, that it, um, again, it's a golden parachute, and I, I'm just not crazy with it. It's a, it's a pretty hefty penalty for the city, and, and again, I'll say it, you know, Larry Hanson wrote this contract up years ago. It, uh, he said it was in the best interest of the city. It was in his best interest, and he, he admitted that. And I, and I think to, you know, to look at a contract that's more reasonable, um, I think somebody last meeting said that we were talking like weeks instead of six months kinda thing, and I know it's a month for, and I, you know, I read the contract, but I just think it's still a bit excessive. So, and just, just so you know, we, I mean, I looked it up, we, you know, you brought up federal employment last meeting, and the salary is at a GS14 step six. Um, that's a, that's a massive amount of money, and that's, GS14s don't get a car or things like that, so, anyway. That's all I have.
You wanna, Steve, do you wanna go back? Performance bonuses, uh, I know there's one at the end of the year, employees get quite often. What other is there, Steve, are you?
That, that's really the only thing we have. We do have the little, uh, attaboy awards that we can give. I actually tweaked this paragraph. It was even more generous than how it reads now. Had some other stuff in there that I don't think complies with our personnel policy, so I whacked some of that out. Uh, the rest of it's still how it was written before, but there's, and that's, that's what concerned me before, how that was written, because there was no definitions in it, and it basically said that the mayor could give him performance bonuses for all kinds of stuff. And that's not allowable under our policy, so I cut that, uh, that sentence out and just left it as to what we get. And really, all there is is we have our, our Christmas deal and then our, uh, the little attaboys you can get, so, um, other than that, under the policy, I don't think there's anything else there that they can get.
I, I think performance bonus, that's, that's a little different than, you know, the Christmas deal and stuff like that. When you're talking performance bonus, it's like, do we bring it in under budget, so therefore he gets a percentage or, or something. I mean, what, what does it constitute to have a performance bonus when we don't have any, um, standards for performance?
And I, and I don't disagree with you, Alan. Like I said, if you'd have seen how that was written before, it was way scarier than what it was, what it is now, so.
So let me, let me, let me chime in on that performance bonus. That's in our policy, and it's basically, as long as a satisfactory evaluation for the year, you can get 1% of their annual salary. That's across the board for all employees in the city, and that's how that, that, uh, performance bonus works. We've had it for a long time.
Yeah, I, I said Christmas, and I, that's what I meant, Alan. That was my, my bet on that, but that's.
And it, it does come in at that time of year.
But they're, they're two separate things, but yeah, that's the one thing that we have, that we've always done. But the way it's written now, he's not an exception. He gets the same thing as all the other employees. The way it was written before, he was an exception, and there could have been all kinds of stuff in there. And so that's why I cut that part of it out.
And I'm, I'm good with all of these changes. I, I don't know if you, um, you know, this is, it's a little bit awkward to be negotiating in a, in a public setting, but, uh, uh, I don't mind. It's, it's all out in the public anyway, and I work for the public, and I'm, I'm cognizant of that. Um, in my, in my interview, I made it clear that tax dollars are sacred to me, in the same way that tithing dollars are sacred to me in a religious context. Uh, tax dollars are sacred to me in a secular context, and they're to be used with prudence and wisdom and as efficiently as possible, and, um, there are, there are provisions in here that, that I voluntarily took out that, uh, I didn't agree with myself. Um, for example, there was a provision for payout of sick time when, when upon termination. Now, keep in mind, guys, I, I, uh, I didn't fully anticipate being in the city for twenty years and retiring and and a very long and fruitful and productive, uh, relationship between the city and myself. So I'm, I'm, I'm not worried at, at all, really, about any of these, um, provisions in here. Um, so that's why I felt comfortable taking that out. Uh, the payment for sick time is, is something that was not common, and I wouldn't expect the city to pay for my sick time. I mean, right now, at Pleasantview City, I've got, uh, hundred and, almost 200 sick hours banked. And when I, when I leave Pleasantview, I don't expect to get paid for that. Now, vacation's a little bit different, obviously, but sick time, I mean, that's just luck. If you, if you don't get sick, you don't use your sick time, you're just lucky, you know, it's there if you need it, but I'm, I'm a relatively healthy person, obviously, and, and have, um, 200 sick hours. So actually, what I think here in Pleasantview is I, we have a, a sick hour bank, and I put everything that I could into that, uh, according to this, the policy here. I put that all into the employee sick hour bank that people can use if they go over their sick hours and, and things like that, so. Um, that all went into there, and the rest just kind of goes away. And so I'm cool with that. That's, uh, a provision, again, that I voluntarily removed because I just don't think it's, it's necessary or desirable to have that in there. Um, so, yeah, and I'm just, I, I guess I'm just pointing out that, uh, Steve and I went over this, the mayor's seen it. Um, we, we negotiated. I feel like in good faith on these things, and I understand the hesitation. I really do. Um, but as was pointed out, these, these protections are really for the city, um, so that if, if there's ever a, a, an issue where, um, you know, the, uh, the city administrator needs to go against an idea or a direction that the council's going because of whatever reason, um, you know, the council maybe has pause and, and pulling that record and, and I don't anticipate that. You guys, I'm, I'm, I really don't. I, we're gonna have a very long, fruitful, happy relationship together, and this is gonna, it's gonna be great. Um, but, you know, like I said, these are, these protections really are in place for myself and for the city, so that's kinda the way we're, we're looking at it.
And just as FYI, Alan, as I understand it, there were some payouts even through the RDA, um, kinda under that similar language, and that's why I, not only do I think that's wrong, I just think that's bad practice.
I agree completely.
Doing it. I think that's ugly, and so, um, that was one of the first things when Stacy sent this to me, that I said, we need to take that out, because that's not even allowable. The council doesn't even know this is going on, so.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want any of that. I want everything to be above board and clear and comfortable, or at least mutually as uncomfortable as possible.
Yeah, and I'm not worried any of that. When Roger was here, I think that happened before then. That RDA as far as any payouts. I think that was for doing RDA loans and things they were talking about.
Yeah, it might have been.
On the car allowance, I, I remember, Alan, when, uh, uh, Roger's contract issue came up with that, I went and did a lot of searching on pay and benefits and different things, and there was, it was pretty common for the city administrator to have a car allowance, either that or a vehicle. Usually it was a car allowance. I don't, I don't remember the.
They've gone to a, they've gone to a car allowance because taxing miles on a city vehicle is, is weird and difficult. The accounting for that is, is awkward. And so, um, just putting it into the, the base salary or as a taxable item that comes in, in a, in a paycheck, in a monthly paycheck, um, you know, I, I use my personal vehicle for a lot of city-related business trips and, and around town and, and things like that, just driving to and from. And this is, uh, just a small compensation for that. Um, it's a recognition that, uh, that is a cost that's incurred, and so, yeah, I actually, at Pleasantview, I get $500 a month. Um, and the 450 is, is right in line with that, so I'm comfortable with that.
Good.
Mayor?
Yes, Brayden?
Just a procedural question. Are we okay to modify this contract and still, um, vote on it tonight and, and accept it?
Want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can. Um, the, the code requires us to have something so that the public gets notice of this. But if we need to amend something, as long as it was something drastic change, little things like this would not be uncommon. We could do stuff like that.
Yeah, that's how I feel too. It's on the agenda. If somebody has a problem or a comment, they'd be here to talk about, but tweaking little things, I don't think hurts any.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
If I could, this is Cody. If I could say one thing about the auto allowance, like Bill said, per the city policy and per a lot of other entities and IRS regulations, we have a couple options there with the auto allowance. He can either be paid at the IRS rate percent per mile like any other employee that uses a city vehicle, or like the city could provide him with a vehicle, or we can provide him with an auto allowance. The good thing about providing him with the auto allowance is then that's just a flat rate. So you guys have the option. You can do any one of those three. How most the other employees in the city work is, is if they have to use their personal vehicle, it just falls under the IRS rate. And that's right about 58 cents per mile reimbursement. Um, so you'd have any of those options. It's just kinda nice budgetarily wise. If it's a flat amount, it's easier to budget for, but we can do whatever you want there for sure.
I had a question, Cody. So, like, if he drives to a conference in St. George, does, he doesn't get reimbursed mileage or anything if he has the vehicle allowance, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Like, in theory, if he has the allowance, that should cover him for anything there. And I think while they, I think prior to Larry, and, you know, this predates me, so I might be off a little bit. I think the city used to provide a vehicle for the city administrator, and they could use that to drive and go wherever they needed to and those kinda things, and they just figured it was more cost-effective to give him an allowance. But yes, you're right. That would, that should cover anything that Bill uses a vehicle for would be that amount.
Okay. Move on to action item three, consideration of resolution 2020, 24. Finding that certain Riverdale City employees are substantially dedicated. Okay, let me read that one more time. Consideration of the resolution, finding that certain Riverdale City employees are substantially dedicated for mitigating or responding to use the COVID-19 public health emergency. This has to do with the care funds. Cody, do you wanna present that, or Steve? You're both on the list, so.
We've been working this for a while, but, uh, Cody, go ahead. I don't, I don't know that I could tell them anything more than you.
So since this is coming at us so fast, and we have to have this money spent by December 30th, we've reached out to some of the contractors and various vendors of items that we would like to purchase, and some of them we're gonna be able to get in time, but some of them we're just not gonna be able to get them in time. And so we've been looking, and originally the state said that they, like, substantially dedicated was gonna be really tough to meet. But as guidance has continued to come out from the federal government, they continue to loosen up those bans, and basically, like, as provided in the packet, basically, all that needs to happen for it to be substantially dedicated for public safety wages is for the chief executive officer to say, to not say that they weren't substantially dedicated to COVID. And then they have to be impacted. And I think if we talk to Jared or to Chief Brinkman, um, they would both say that they're doing things differently now than in the past. So what we are basically asking for is if you guys are amicable, what we'd like to do is have you declare that basically the public safety wages and that some of the other wages of the city are substantially dedicated to responding to COVID. And then that'll allow us to use that last distribution of care spending and maybe part of the second one to cover those wages. And then what we'd like to do, and the reason that we would maybe like to set another of their public caring, is that frees up our unrestricted tax money in the budget to so we can use the restricted money to pay the wages. And then some of these projects that would still be good to do, such as like Rich's bathroom remodel, that's something we've had on the, um, capital improvement plan for a couple of years. We can use that money now to do those things. The fear is by substantially dedicating your wages. The fear is by substantially dedicating your wages, that if our auditors came back and said, hey, like, we don't really agree with that, that they could potentially, then we'd have to potentially pay that funding back. But if we've used that funding, like our unrestricted funding to do projects that would qualify for CAREs as well, we should have like a fallback and be like, okay, well, if you don't like our, our wages, then we did these projects and they all qualify under COVID. But it gives us, it takes away that December 30th deadline and it gives us time to. Cause like Rich, last time I talked to him, just a couple of days ago, he hadn't even been able to get a bid back on his bathroom remodel because all the contractors are so busy right now. And that's kind of the things we're running into. So that's why we'd like to look at it this way with the CAREs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, just a couple of little quick things there. Um, the documents that are in that packet are the, the question and answers from the feds that they're basically saying you can do this. So that's why we were leaning that way. And then just as another example, um, the, uh, the CDC, we, we got thinking about replacing all of our drinking fountains while we were trying to take advantage of this because of the COVID thing. Um, the, the, the one that we have upstairs here in the main lobby, where you have that little push button thing where you can bring your own container. The CDC isn't as concerned about them as they are normal drinking fountains. And so we thought, well, let's replace them all while we have this money because they're nice and people like those because you can bring your own jug in and stuff like that. The problem is, is they're so far out, uh, between them and a plumber, we may not even be able to get to that work until like March, which is way beyond the deadline. So this is a way that we can still accomplish that hopefully without jeopardizing or losing any of that funding.
Let me ask you this, so when you're talking public safety, what salaries, what all are you talking about? For what types of duties and work?
Well, it'd, it'd, it'd be our police and fire guys. I mean, the impression we're getting from it is it's their salary because things are so drastically different and how they're having to approach everything. We, we, I kind of dropped it up a little bit vague as you read that ordinance. That was done on purpose because we're hoping that possibly some other things could be added in there besides police and fire because it's the same thing like with our, our secretaries and stuff up front here. You know, their workload's completely different and they're having to deal with public and, and things like that. We don't know if they'll add future stuff into that. But if they do, um, we may be able to add more than just our police and fire. That was the intent behind that.
We should have plenty of expenditures just with police and fire to cover that funding too.
I just had one quick question. I know we're short on time. Um, in the box on the last, last page of our packet, it says the, the funding may only be used to cover costs. Number two says that were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved. Like I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're able to use that for, for expenses that were already budgeted for, like their wages. Unless I'm just completely off on it and I could be.
So part of that is, and that's the big argument, and some of those, that approved budget goes back to your March 27th budget. So as of March 27th, 2020, when the CAREs funding was approved, it's as of that budget. So technically the budget that we're operating under now was not approved then. And then like Jared's overtime and some of those things, um, and even Scott's, even though we budgeted some of that, like Jared's been running way over on some of his overtime and some of it's due to staffing, some of it's, it's just been hard to get like part timers during COVID. And so that applies, but I've talked to like a bunch of different people, even several CPAs about it. And they're fine with it. And we're actually being super conservative, even just doing one. North Salt Lake decided just to use all of their funding to pay for their public safety wages from the beginning, from March 1st going forward. They've been using that funding. And all the research I've done, they actually went back and like the public safety is one thing that doesn't fall under that provision because it's substantially dedicated and it's changed significantly. Now like other things, like we can't pay for like basic IT stuff that yes, we had a budget for and we were going to pay for anyways. We can't all of a sudden be like, well, we're going to use CAREs funding for that. But because public safety wages have been substantially dedicated and impacted by COVID, that's how we can utilize those funds. It's just like tax law, we just have to hit the loopholes. And with the public safety, we can hit those loopholes and navigate it.
Are you aware that all this has to be into the state by November 23rd?
So we've already reported our stuff. So the only, the requirement with the state is they want to know if we're not going to spend our money because then if we're not going to spend our money, then they have to figure out how they're going to spend it.
Right. Well, the county, county wants it first, but, uh.
Right.
I, I talked to John Bond recently and, uh, he told me that we have to report to the state any of that money that we're planning on using by December 30th, that we've got to do it by November 23rd.
We've already reported it, Mayor, to the state. So they already have all the transactions that we've spent through November 30th of CAREs act funding. So it's already done. So.
Okay, um, I think we need, we can go ahead and do this tonight, but I, I think before we sign it, Senator Ford, I'd like to talk to you and Steve about it. Okay, we didn't talk about this before, but I've, uh, I just got some concerns. It says chief executive signs for all this and, uh, I happen to, that falls in my job description. So I've done that, I've done a little asking too, and I just want to make sure we're on track with, uh, how much of the salaries we're paying and what it's being used for. I know if it's COVID related, I know the chief, I know Chief Shully, I'm sure Chief Brinkman has, but they've spent a lot of time together for training and, and coming up with guidelines and all those kinds of things. And all that is definitely COVID related. Uh, I can see where he's short. You know how these businesses have been short of, uh, uh, well, yeah, the businesses got the CAREs funding because of their losses that, that they've had in their businesses. But I know Jared, I'm sure he paid extra overtime and had to do things for, uh, to, to pick up for those shortage they've had, part-time help. But I just want to really make sure we're, we're in there doing the right thing. I read all those things that you sent us and, uh, you can still read, I don't know, depends on how you read it. So I just want to be really sure because when this CAREs thing first come out, all we got was caution, caution, caution. Federal auditors come, you're going to pay it all back. So I think we have to be really careful and, uh, maybe just chat about it a little bit before we sign the papers, what's down here tonight. I mean, I've got a problem with you going with it. I think the interest, the time, uh, if the council, you know, that's up to them, whether they approve it or not. But, uh, the time is pretty limited and I know we need to really act quickly on everything we're doing, so.
Yeah, that was the plan, Mayor. We, we plan on meeting with you, we just needed to get this before the councils quickly as we could, just so that they're okay with it. And then we'll sit down with you before any of that stuff gets finalized.
I'm glad that's.
It's just deadlines, we just are so, so short on time on all this stuff, we just have to.
Right, and that's why I'm saying we ought to go ahead and act tonight, but then before we.
Yeah.
The matter, we need to really be sure what we're doing, so.
Yep.
Mayor, I've got some guidance from other city administrators that I'd be happy to share with everybody as well so that we can see what other cities are doing and how they're using those funds. Um, it's, uh, the city manager group put together, um, an online document that we can all look at. So I'll forward that to Cody and to Steve and, and to you, Mayor, so we can have a look at that and, and see what the guidance is there.
Okay, maybe you could even meet with us if you wanted to, if you're available, so.
Yeah.
I don't remember what your schedules like the next couple of days, so.
Right, so you guys are letting us vote on it, so we go to jail?
That's exactly right.
It comes down to the guy that signs it. If I don't exclude everything, then it's, but it is, I mean, it's, you guys sign it and the, uh, city attorney's in there, everybody. So it's, uh, I just say, it's got to be right. I really want to make sure we're right in what we're doing.
And it, it's a budgetary issue because it affects our budget and you guys, you guys are the points of that. So we have to keep you. So.
And Mayor, I have put hundreds of hours into this research, like I, I wouldn't bring something that I didn't feel confident that we could do. And I've talked to tons of CPAs, the ones that are going to be doing these audits. And I wasn't, that's why it's so last minute is because I didn't want to, it wasn't my first option. But the more I talked to them, some of them, they even do audits and they work with cities, they're treasurers as well as auditors. And they're doing it for the cities that they work for and, and they're fine with it and they're signing off on it. And so because of that, I really think we'll be just fine. And, uh, we obviously want to be super careful with it too, because if we misappropriate it, then we have to pay it back. And so we've been checking every box. I've read so much stuff on this that I really think we're just fine doing this substantially dedicated.
I have full faith in you, Cody. If there's anybody I would believe when it comes to finance stuff, you're the man, so. I don't, I don't question, I just want, just want to be sure, okay? Just for my own mind, because I read through a lot of that stuff, semantics and, uh, word meaning and stuff like that. You can read, read it one way or you can read something else too, so.
For sure. And I mean, it's a huge document, so you read one part like Counselor Mitchell brought up and it's like, well, you can't do that. But then you read the next exception and it's like, well, yeah, if it meets these things, then it's allowable and it, but.
Okay, all right. So we'll just, we'll get together, maybe tomorrow we could get together. I don't know if you're here tomorrow, Cody and Steve or, um.
I'm open all day tomorrow, so whatever time works for you guys.
Okay. All right, we can talk after, get that set up. Um, should we just move item four, chief? Should we just take that to the regular meeting, council meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, we're way over on time.
I think we're over a little bit, so let's do that. Is there any discretionary for this meeting? Okay, move on, uh, I need a motion to adjourn the work session.
Don't move. Second.
Have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Of course not. Okay, move on to the city council meeting. Uh, like to call the city council meeting to order, uh, Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. Uh, for the record, all city council members are present. Um, as are members of the staff. Uh, like to move on next to the pledge of allegiance. I've asked Counselor Ellis to lead us in the pledge, please.
Please rise and repeat your allegiance with me. Aye.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, unuttered, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Move on next to our moment of silence. Uh, tonight we'd like to take a moment of silence, uh, uh, and we'd like to remember those who are serving. We would like to think of our first responders and the many things they're dealing with. Uh, think of our military folks that are serving in behalf of our country. Uh, we would ask those, uh, uh, maybe special moment for those that are on the council there in mind as we make choices and decisions and, uh, make, make good choices in behalf of those that we represent. Uh, I've noticed the COVID, one little thing I'll just mention here on the COVID-19, that the latest figures Chris has been posting all those on our Facebook, city Facebook page are, they come out every few days, but, uh, right now we're having about four new cases in Riverdale per day. And, uh, that's, uh, that's really a concern, so maybe remember that in your, your prayers and your moment of silence, so. I will now take a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, move on next to public comment. Uh, we asked earlier, is there anything that's come up for public comment, Shaylee or Rich that you're aware of? Okay. Move on next to, uh, presentations and reports. Uh, mayor's report, uh, uh, just a reminder, our Veterans Day program is a week from today, 10 o'clock next Wednesday. Uh, it is a virtual thing, there's no in-person meeting. Uh, the video, I believe, is coming along really well. Uh, we're doing a video this year and that'll be available, I think, understandably, both on our Facebook, uh, page and on YouTube. Is that right, Rich?
That's the plan, Mayor. Uh, we have all the footage that we need, we're just getting it edited.
Try to piece it together, but it's, uh, it's come together really well. TH Bell, they've done our national anthem. They recorded that at their school. Uh, we had Brigadier General Colleen Von Hoffman, she came last Friday, met with us up in front of the Veterans Memorial and, uh, and filmed her. We filmed different portions then, including her, uh, her message, Veterans Day message. And that went really well, it was a beautiful day and it should, should be good. She gave a really, really good message and it's kind of fun. We enjoyed having her with us and talking with her. Uh, we've also got Mount Ogden Brass, I know Rich has coordinated with them and, uh, they came out, we filmed them at the Veterans Memorial and, uh, they're going to do a military tribute, so. Uh, should be about, like usually about 30 minutes, 30, 35 minutes, but, uh, that'll be next, uh, next Wednesday. Rich and, uh, Chris Stone are, uh, doing that for us. We appreciate their work. I know that's not something they normally do and they're probably learning some things as they go along, but we appreciate your service, Rich, and that what Chris is doing to help you with it, so. Uh, move on next, uh, to consent items. Uh, consideration to prove the meeting minutes from, uh, October 20th, the city council work session and the city council regular session from that evening. Uh, is there any more changes or corrections other than what we're discussing earlier? With that, could we have a motion on the consent items?
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, move on to action items. Action item one, consideration of ordinance 927. Approving updates on previous ordinance to meet current water demand requirements. Uh, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have ordinance in place to extract water shares as development comes in. Um, this is just an update to that, updating the amount of water that they bring. I've worked extensively with Jones and Associates in Salt Lake. And this is a number they've kind of came up with for us for actual usage per home in Riverdale for a year. And with, you know, there's a lot of talk now of, you know, more high density development. I really think it's in our best interest to have the developer bring water with them, which would help us keep our water rates lower. And if you guys have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Okay, any questions? Rashawn. Seeing none, do we have a motion on ordinance 927?
Motion to approve ordinance night.
Order it tonight.
As stated in the packet?
As stated in the packet. Okay.
We have a second?
Second.
Counselor Mitchell made the motion, was it Counselor Hilton on the second?
Counselor Hill on the second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Nay, would you pull counsel please on?
Counselor, please on me.
Councilmember Ellis?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
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 Councilmember Hilton?
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Stevens?
Did you get Counselor Stevens?
Did he do a thumbs up? I didn't see anything.
I'm not seeing him up here anymore.
I don't see him on.
My last team.
Hey, did you get, were you able to get a vote?
I got four out of the five. I think I just put a question mark next to Bart when he comes back and then we can ask him.
Okay, that'll be good. Sounds good. Let's move on to action item two, consideration of resolution 2020. I think we're getting a lot of feedback. I don't know if any of you can turn your, set your sound off, your mute. Put it on mute. Consideration of resolution 2020-23. This is to approve employment contract for the Riverdale City Administrator. As we mentioned, this was resolution or contract was tabled at our last meeting. There were some changes and suggestions made to change the contract. So that has been done. Our appointee, Bill Kobev, has been very willing to negotiate and work out the details on this contract. But this is the contract that's in your pocket that's been put together with the recommendations that were made from our last meeting. So do you have any changes or any discussion on this? We need, first, we need to untable it, so.
Move to untable.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Arnold to untable and sound like Counselor Mitchell. Second. Okay, any discussion on this resolution, this contract at this point?
Mayor?
Mr. Ellis?
Did we have Bill tell a little about himself? I, I don't know him that well. Just sort of an introduction.
I don't, why? Why don't we do that toward the end during discretionary, could we?
Okay, that's fine.
I think so. We got a motion. Did we have a second on that?
Second.
Motion to, no, there was, there wasn't a motion.
Okay, you're right. Okay, go ahead. Do we have a motion on this contract?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2023. To approve the employment contract for the Riverdale City Administrator.
Second. Did we vote on untabling? No.
Let's, let's vote untable. How's that? Okay? All right.
He said he's looking for a phone number. He's texting me.
There's a phone number on the meeting invite.
Okay, all in favor of untabling?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous in favor, the resolution, the contract's been untabled. Do we have any discussion on the contract? Counselor Ellis?
Move to approve. Ordinance 20, a resolution 202023 to approve the employment contract for the Riverdale City Administrator.
Second.
A motion by Counselor Ellis, second by Counselor Hilton. Ms. Nay, would you poll the council on resolution 2020?
Mayor, can we have discussion on the motion?
Go ahead.
First of all, Counselor Stevens is trying to get back into the meeting. And he had some objections last week. I, I think we ought to wait for him to be there. For example, if it was a two to two vote, then it would come down to you. And I think having the councilman trying to get into the meeting, we should be allowing him that courtesy.
That's, that's fine. I did ask for discussion on the contract, but not on the motion.
So his, his computer's not working. He can't find the phone number, so I think I'd send it to him.
You did send him the motion or the phone number, Brayden?
I think. Let me make, let me look at it here and see. Yeah, I, I just texted him the phone number.
Okay.
So, and, and just, I don't, I don't know if we want to continue with, as the contract's written, I won't be voting for it. So. So that.
That's fine. Hear from Bart yet?
Unless his phone grabs the password off of the link, which it doesn't sound like he did. He used Brayden's text. It's quite, quite a chore to enter the meeting ID and then the password, which is upper lowercase numbers or whatever. So we probably better give him a minute.
Especially if you try to do it on a flip phone. Holy cow.
Shaylee, do you know the email you use for Bart?
Okay.
Looks to me like he called her.
Yeah, I'm trying to send him that link, but.
We can call him on the conference phone. That's what Shaylee's working on. I don't know if one of you, I don't have Bart's cell phone number. If one of you wanna, probably don't give it to us over that. But if you, I don't know if somebody has Shaylee's cell phone number and wants to text her his phone number, then she can just call him on the conference phone and that might be easier for him to get in quick.
Okay, I've got it here. What do you need me to do, Cody?
Just go give it to Shaylee and she can call him on the conference phone. And then he can just conference call in and then we can bypass the wiretap.
Is she perhaps working on that right now?
Yes.
Or she's jogging.
Right.
I can just put it on speaker. The conference phone isn't working, so I'll just put this on speaker. What is it?
Uh, eight oh one, six four five, five six three zero.
Thank you. Sorry, I was fighting the, he's dialing right now.
This is Bart.
Hi Bart, I have it on speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I'm gonna mute.
Okay. Me is on and he can hear us. Do you want me to tell him to comment on the resolution?
You're on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a motion by Counselor Ellis to approve the contract resolution 202023. We had a second by Counselor Hilton. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Did you hear him, Bart? I can't hear you, sorry. Yes. I can barely, I can't hear him, so give me one second.
Okay.
You can hear me now? Okay. Did you hear what the mayor said?
Can you hear me, Bart?
I'm gonna try calling him on my cell phone and putting it on speaker because this one's not working. So hold on one second, sorry.
Okay.
You know, whatever else comes out of this, I think Shaylee deserves some sort of medal award, a major award. It's awesome and I appreciate it.
We should use some CARES funding to buy some better technology.
There you go.
This is Bart.
Hey Bart, it's me.
This is Bart.
Can you hear me?
Over Brayden's house, you know, within that bedroom.
You are on, so they, the mayor's gonna talk to you. Hey, he's on.
Can you hear me, Bart?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2023 to approve the employment contract.
Mayor? We, we haven't voted to untable it.
I think we did.
Yeah.
I know we did.
That's right, Bart, Bart didn't get a, be a part of that. That's, that's right. There was a question mark. That's what Shaylee was doing. So it was four to, four and a question mark.
Okay. We had a motion to untable.
Sounds like I've listened to Charlie Brown's teacher. Sorry.
You there, Bart?
I'm there, but I'm really not getting that, but that's all right. That's all right. Trying to come back. Okay, you know what? My computer's back. Let me see if I can reconnect.
Okay.
I couldn't hear him, Shaylee.
He's, his computer's working, so he's gonna try to reconnect really fast because he can't understand what we're saying.
Okay. Can you hear us, Bart?
Yeah, thank you.
I can see ya, okay. We had a motion to untable resolution 2023, the contract.
Yay.
And that was, that was approved, right? I mean, other Shaylee's, Bart's vote, which Bart's vote was that on that we didn't get, Al?
It was the untabling, but the one that I had the question mark on was the ordinance, ordinance 927.
Okay, that's the one you did get his vote, right? Okay. Let's go back to that action item one, consideration of ordinance 927. Approving the updates on the previous ordinance. There was a motion to, to approve that. There was a second, Bart. She did a roll call vote on the ordinance and you weren't, that's when you went away, so. We just need a vote from you.
Yay.
Okay, unanimous in favor. Okay, back to resolution 2023. We had a motion to approve resolution 2023. This is to approve the employment contract for the Riverdale City Administrator. We had a second motion by Counselor Ellis, second by Counselor Hilton. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Was it untabled?
Yes.
Thank you.
We already did that and it was untabled. You poll the council on the resolution, Ms. Nay?
Mayor? Just for, for Bart's benefit, I had already stated after the motion and the second were given that I would not be voting for this as it's written. We, we really didn't have any discussion on this before Counselor Ellis put the motion forward.
I asked for discussion.
And when you asked for discussion, he made the motion.
That's because nobody made the, any comments, so he made the motion.
Well, let's look at the tape and we'll see.
Well. Okay, let's go back to resolution 2023. I'm gonna call for a motion to untable it.
Tell me.
Okay, Counselor Ellis, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of untabling? Let's ask, is there any discussion on the motion?
Let, let's vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, four. Do a roll call vote, please, Ms. Nay on the vote, please.
Didn't we already do this?
Yep, we're starting over again, just to make sure you're all on track, okay? So we don't have to keep going back, starting over when somebody objects, so.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Nay.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
It's four in favor, one opposed on the untabling. The ordinance has been until the resolution's been untabled. Is there any discussion on the resolution on the contract?
So, Mayor? Oh, go ahead, Brayden. Well, I was, I was just gonna say, so I appreciate the changes that were made. And the only other one that I really, really see modified is under section seven. And it is D, where Counselor Arnold already brought it up. The city felt to renew this. I'd like to take it out of the agreement, so that doesn't qualify as a termination.
Would you say that, you, you broke up on my end here, right in the middle, okay?
Sorry.
The city, the city what? I didn't. I didn't hear that.
It talks about if the city fails to renew this agreement, then it qualifies as a termination or severance, and I would just like to see that whole section D taken out of there.
All right.
Is that a scenario that would have fit Mr. Worthing a couple of years ago, when it was just overlooked? Is that what the scenario that that would fall into? Or is that just let the contract expire? Is that not following why that's... yeah, why that even needs to be there?
Steve, doesn't that mean for any reason? Once they're entered into this contract for any reason whatsoever, other than criminal conviction, that contract is... or that severance is paid?
Picks up anything but a termination for cause, that's listed in another place. So, yes...
Right, that's a criminal conviction.
Right. Alan's... or in response to Bart, Roger would have fallen under this. If it had been done timely, his was a little bit different anyway, but either way.
How about Braden's comments, Steve, on removing... I don't have a copy of that contract here, so...
7.1D?
It's in the act.
Then that's... he's right, I mean, that's... I never talked to Bill about this, and I don't know if that's something he would be okay with, or... He's giving a thumbs up, so if he wanted to move forward with the motion to include that as a change, we will... we can easily strike that part of it.
And that's to remove it, right?
Right. Well, if somebody makes that motion, but Bill seems to be in compliance with it, or agreement with it, so... That would be an easy fix.
All right.
That's all I had, if there's any other discussion, I'm done right now.
All right, the only other thing I had, again, I'm a little concerned about 7.1A, that we can't talk about the salary unless it's all employees. And I'm just saying, future financial hard times, to say that it goes to all employees. So, I think it should be maybe management employees, rather than all employees. And then, let's see, I had that with Braden as well. And I won't vote for anything that's over three months. It goes up to six months, but if it goes... it can be a month for every year, but it goes at three months, I won't vote for anything that's over three months. And also, I'm a little concerned about the COBRA insurance that has to be paid, and retirement beyond that. If the severance package is given, we still have to pay monies for retirement for three months, and we still have to pay COBRA insurance. I don't think those should be in there as well. I think it's a severance package, very rarely includes anything like that, a continuation of benefits.
Thanks for your comments. Any other comments? Do we have a motion on the contract?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Councilor Mitchell.
Motion to approve its resolution, right, 2023?
Right.
Authorizing an agreement for employment, a city administrator between Bill Kobeb and the city of Riverdale, with the changes that were discussed. Steve, do I need to be more specific than that?
Yeah, let's... I would specifically list that one, 7.1D, because Alan's got some other ones there, so we need to know in case this moves on us here.
Okay, 7.1D will be removed from the contract. Let's see. If anyone can guide me to those other ones, I'll put them in there.
Let's don't put the other ones in there.
I would also like to limit it to three months on the severance package, and that's my motion.
Second?
Any thoughts on the COBRA insurance and retirement?
I'm actually okay with the COBRA being on there, because it can be hard to find insurance, but I don't think we need to pay retirement for three months. I would amend the motion to that.
I can live with that if the second does.
I'm okay with it, yes.
How about Bill Kobeb, you wanna... should we just table this and renegotiate it?
No, I'm okay with those changes as proposed.
You're okay? All right.
Sorry. Well, it makes sense, this is a three-year contract, anyway, so having a three-month window here, I think is fine. We wouldn't go beyond that, anyway, not in this three-year contract period. And again, these provisions are in there as a safety vow for the city administrator, and I promise you, I'm looking forward to a very long and fruitful relationship with the city, and it's gonna be awesome, and I don't envision any of this ever coming to play for any reason. We're gonna be good, and I'm excited to get to work, and this is gonna be great.
Can I jump in here? I just... I think we can work it out, I'm just... I wanna make sure we're right. So, right now, it's he gets one month for every 12 months of completed employment.
Up to three months.
Max it out at three months, right? So, same language is okay, just max it out at three months.
Yeah, and I'm cool with that.
Okay, okay.
But not the... not retirement, but COBRA insurance.
Yeah, I'm cool with that, too.
Okay.
And not the car.
I'm not cool with that, I think that's fair to include that in there. I'm gonna be using my truck a lot for city things, so...
Okay, I think we're good.
My car gets used a lot, I know mine... I use mine, I'd serve on about 10 different committees. Three of them are Salt Lake, and you do a lot of driving on your own, okay? My car a lot... what I get is included in my salary, but that was changed quite a few years ago. But I think you ought to be given credit for using his car, just like you went out... We went to Wasatch Integrated about a week and a half ago for a tour out there on their new recycling facility, and he drove out there, drove his POV there, so I think that's just, you know... I know you don't like contracts, Councilor Arnold, but let's don't take everything out of it.
I think he was mostly just kidding about that one. Yes, mostly.
He wasn't kidding.
Yeah, but just about the three months, Mayor? If it's part of the three months.
No, that's not part of the three months.
Right, I know. The mayor doesn't know, you know.
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
I know. So, I'm fine with those, with that language. I mean, obviously, Alan was joking about the car thing, so... But the motion that I made, I'm okay with that, I'm glad Bill is, too.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, does the second agree?
I agree, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Yes. Would Mr. Brooks please read back, because of the banter back and forth? I wanna make sure what I'm... what you have, please, without others commenting? Okay, the way it will read now is 7.1D will be stricken completely, so that won't even be in there. And then, in 7.2A, will be limited to three months, instead of six months. COBRA stays in, so B stays, but retirement, which is C, is also stricken. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you okay with that, Bart?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, we poll the council on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you.
Thanks very much, guys, I appreciate it.
Move on to action item three, consideration of resolution 2024, finding that certain Riverdale City employees are substantially dedicated for mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency, Mr. Carden.
Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted. Thank you, Mayor. So, as we talked in the work session, this is part of the CARES Act funding, and is provided in the packet. There is that provision, and if I can share my screen, maybe I will show you the one thing. And we're just asking that the city substantially declare... or substantially dedicate the employees, and basically, it's just the public safety employees mainly, and that is one of the examples in some of this documentation, and we'll go over with the mayor, with Mr. Kobeb, and make sure. But we feel like that's an opportunity for us to use this as best that we could, rather than just trying to hurry and spend it, and not spend it well, if you will. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, everything that Cody said in the previous meeting is public record, right? That's correct. Okay, so I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2020-24, as stated within the packet, but turning approval over to you, the mayor, as from your discussions with the meeting that you'll have with Cody and the mayor, and Bill at a later date.
Do we have a second on the motion? Thank you, Alan.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, we poll the council, please.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
On the resolution?
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you. Move on to action item four, discussion, consideration, action on wild animal control within the city. Chief Brinkman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you guys know, I'm listed as presenter, but this wasn't something I requested to be on here. This came from the council. We had a discussion on this a while back, when we went away from providing this service with all the reasons that I gave at that time, those reasons. I'm still in the same position, this isn't a service that I think we should provide for different reasons there. We've gone back again, and we've talked to every city in Weber County and Davis County, and there isn't any cities that provide this service. There's some different concerns with, I mean, really, city animal controls be dealing with dogs and cats, and in an extenuating circumstance, and we can help in some of these situations. Now, I wouldn't have a problem loaning a city trap to people to trap raccoons free of charge, but we didn't want to be involved in the euthanizing and disposal of them, and it's just not something that city animal control does. And raccoons and skunks and wildlife, they're creatures of habitat, you're never gonna get away from this problem. Not even in Weber County, that's completely rural, do they offer this service? So, I'm still... I've still got the same opinion that this is a service that we shouldn't provide.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions for the chief?
Mayor, I have some.
Okay.
So, I was one of the ones that kinda brought this up, and wanted to have this discussion, and I was under the impression that there were a few cities around. I thought Leyton did something, I know Brigham City does something like that, and I hadn't spent much time looking at other cities, because I thought there was a couple. The bigger problem that has been brought to me in the neighborhoods around here has been with the skunks. They're really hard to dispose of, and I think people can get a city trap and handle a raccoon usually, but the skunks create kind of a big problem. And so, my thought was, maybe we could offer a service, kinda like... kinda like we contract with, like, the towing people and stuff, maybe we could just have somebody on call that comes and deals with an animal, if people have that problem. Yeah, so that's kinda where I was thinking, that we might be able to go with that.
We can look into that, that's gonna be... that's gonna cost more money. You know, a private service is definitely... My feelings are on this, is that if this is something that you really wanna provide, we should have a fee, and it should be at least $50, and that would include a trap, euthanizing, and disposal. You're not gonna get someone to come out... a skunk from... we made some phone calls to private companies, the cheapest we could find was $150, and that's just, it's an easy... everything goes great. Raccoons, you can get someone between probably the cheapest, $50 to $75, if there aren't any issues at all. So, you know, I'm not... if we were to offer this, if we were to go to a private service, it'd cost a lot more money. We could probably do it and offer it for a cheaper amount, but I just think that, you know, we'd have to have a fee, unless you're wanting, really, just to pick up the cost of that.
I have a little bit more information on that, that I... I've talked to Braden about it, but I haven't informed the whole council. When you brought this up the last time, I contacted... well, I got online, the DWR has a page there where they list private individuals who do this, and I contacted... There's the two closest ones, one was in North Ogden, one of them was in Lake, they were the two closest we had. They both seemed really anxious about giving us a bid on that, but I bugged them a couple of times, and I had received nothing from them. But that's a service that's available now, but like the chief says, it's pricey. I mean, it's more expensive than anything, but they are willing to do it, and those numbers are available, and we can do that now, but it wasn't cheap to have that done.
Steve, was that a per-animal fee that they wanted?
Yes. It's per call that they come on. And they're willing to do it, but... and another thing, and I expressed this to Braden, they got really hot under the collar, even with the thought of a city doing this, because they feel that it's a city competing against a private practice, because this is all they do, the one guy. I think both of them did, actually, and so, they weren't really happy about that, but they were willing to offer the services with the city. And the one guy said, you know, if you had me online, and you just used me, I could be there probably that same day, because I know time was of the essence on some of that, so...
And keep in mind that I know with those companies, after hours and weekends, they also... They told us they charge more than what the standard rate is, so... I don't know, maybe they would give a flat rate fee, or I doubt it, they're probably gonna charge per animal, but I don't know, I don't know how much that cost would be, I don't know how many calls we could...
My hope was contacting them, that we would get a cut rate, but I can't get them to give me a bid, so... That was probably, I don't know, when did you bring that up? Braden, about two months ago or something, and I still haven't heard from him.
Well, and I'll tell you some of the complaints that I'm dealing with, and I'm up against. I got... because I've told the people... I got, because I've told the people, hey, that's kind of expensive, because, you know, the feedback I got is, it's going to cost the city some money, and I've had more than one person say, well, if you can, if you can spend $200,000 on roundabouts, certain people provide a little bit of this service for us, and then, the other issue that really had a couple people really hot was, so they were using the city traps, they catch a skunk, and Bonnie was telling them to drown the skunk, instructions on how to do that, and people were not happy that the city was telling people to do that, I mean, they were, they were very upset, and so, I was just kind of caught in the middle, like, I, I don't know, like, I don't know what to tell you, you know?
So, that, that, DWR, when you call them, that is the preferred method by the Division of Wildlife Resources?
Right, right, and I, I
And I know no one wants to do that.
Yeah, and I read some stuff about it, and I mean, like, the, the National Organization of Veterinarians, all this stuff, say it's a horrible way, and it's not humane, and so, but I do know that, I mean, it's not like Bonnie was inhumane, you know, she was just passing on what she'd heard, but that's just, that's where I'm kind of coming from, is I'm getting it kind of from both sides on that kind of stuff.
Let me, let me explain to you a couple of the other issues we've had, because over the years, Bonnie begged and begged for us to get rid of this, and we just kept doing it, even though other cities weren't doing it, I would, I would feel a little better about doing this if we had all the other cities around us doing this, and maybe there, we could make a, just a smaller den in it, but when no one's doing it, I just don't think it does a whole lot of good, but she at one time had a problem when she was trying to euthanize a skunk, and actually had to go and get all the series of rabies shots done, because it was, it was a horrible experience for her, that involved a skunk, she had a couple of issues with raccoons, where she had given them the first dose, wanted to get them out of the trap, and the raccoon actually came out, she thought it was sedated enough, it came out and actually got on her, and a guy hit it with a shot, I mean, there's, several incidents where we had some close calls, and with some of the diseases they carry, that's just another concern with our employees when dealing with wildlife, so.
Let me, let me share an experience with you. We had raccoons this, earlier this year, probably spring, early summer, but we got, had raccoons, it was when Bonnie was still here, chief, and I called Bonnie, because I knew she had traps, I'd seen she giving traps out to other people in the city to catch them themselves, and so, I got the trap, I got a trap from her, I was going to see what I could do with it, and when I got the trap from her, we got talking, and she mentioned basically what the chief's saying about what they do, and I remembered that we'd had discussion early, in fact, I contacted Brayden, because I think the decision had been made not to do that down in River Glen, and so, me being the mayor, I thought, well, I'm not going to do something that somebody else has been told that service isn't available, so, I actually gave her the trap back, well, she told me what I should do, she says, she says that they had two, on two, there were two reasons that they would go after the raccoon, and one was that if you had a small child, and the raccoons were a threat, a small child, or if you had a small pet, they would come out and they would take care and get rid of the raccoons for you. We didn't have, well, we did, we had a dog at the time, but anyway, I gave her the trap back, she asked, I asked her, what would you do then, if the city doesn't do it, she says, well, you have to call pest control, so I called pest control, I had pest control out, I gave her the trap back, in fact, I actually took it down to the city, put it at the police station, not wanting special favors, but I did call pest control, they did come out, took a while, but it cost me $400 to do that, and she told me it was going to be pricey, but I just think we have to be careful, these are all private property issues, so somebody builds a house, they build it next to the woods, and then the city has to go in and take care of the wild animals that come out of the woods, and I kind of wonder if maybe we don't, I don't know what Steve thinks, but kind of, Steve Brooks, yeah, kind of opened the door for other things, if somebody's tree, or somebody's tree is, gets near your yard, you know, should the city pay for it to come get it out, because it's, I don't know, I'm just mentioning that, that's my experience with, with the pest control, that's what Bonnie suggested I do, and it was pricey, so, I don't know, I, I'm not really, I don't know that the city, you know, if there's some, if they've got a list, if there's people in Leighton, the people that we're competing with, maybe, maybe they should give them a list, these names, have them available for the public, they got a problem with a skunk, have them call them, take care of it. Should the city have to pay for it, I don't know, that's just my own opinion, I know that's not what they want to hear down River Glen, but that's what I see, and I think we have to be pretty fair and consistent all the way across the board, so.
And I get, I get where residents are coming from, like, where I live, I have raccoons, skunks, I have deer on a monthly basis in my front yard, eating my trees, and I don't expect the city to step in and take care of that, that problem, but I, I understand the problem, because I experienced it myself.
I got a question that relates more to attracting them, so I think I'm aware of people that actually feed some of these wild animals to, because they think they're cute, is this, does the city have an ordinance about that?
I don't, I don't know, regarding wildlife, we do involving cats, feeding them, I don't remember how it's worded without looking it up, if it would cover wildlife, but even, even feeding your pets outdoors and water out attracts some raccoons like crazy, and skunks.
Mayor? I, I was, I was part of the conversation that Brayden's talking about, and I, I think it would be good for the city to have some traps, that people have access to them, as long as they, I don't know if we, we let them use them and have a disclaimer written up that says, you, you deal with the, the animals, so we're at least trying to help, but I definitely don't think, you know, the police and animal control should be dealing with it, but if they're, if we have, I mean, I was just looking online, they have, you know, special skunk traps and, skunks, skunks, I agree, I had, the resident talked to me, and he was talking about skunks, and, and that's a little bit more different than raccoons, and then, and Chief Brinkman, if you could let me know, or let us know, discharging a firearm in city limits is against the law.
Correct.
So, I mean, if we were to provide some traps, that they can do it, if they want to take it out in the, you know, Chief Brinkman's area and let it go, or something, something like that, but they, they would be
That's also, that's also illegal, actually, you can't relocate.
Hey, Steve, would you put that in the disclaimer?
Got it.
But yeah, the, the thing was, the, the people didn't, the, that talked to me, didn't have any idea what to do, and so, when they, when they get into that situation, they reach out to the city, and I think if we said, we have traps that you can use, you have to bring them back, or whatever, but you're responsible for whatever catch, you can't relocate, and we're not going to tell you to drown it, but, you know, giving them an option with the city when they reach out to us, and, and we at least have one step that we can say, you know, we're, we're trying to help, but we're not going to get involved. But Scott, I mean, Chief Brinkman's people should not be involved in that kind of stuff, but if they can go to the city, I'll throw Rich under the bus here, but if it's at the community center, and they can rent it out, or something like that, just like the park, and say, you know what, and you have to clean it if it's sprayed, or something, the return fee, but I think we should spend a few hundred bucks to get some traps, so they can do it, but they're responsible for the animal, and not call the city beyond that, Scott, Scott peoples should not be involved.
We do have traps, we could always pick up a few more, we don't, we don't have a lot, we've probably got three or four that we can loan out, I, I don't have a problem with letting them use our traps for free, in the winter, we, we don't trap, we normally don't do any trapping from November to the end of March, because you never know when you're going to catch the neighbor's cat overnight, and it freezes, and then we've got another problem on our hands, so, we, we don't, we don't really recommend that in the winter, but skunks are even difficult for us, when, when we'd have to euthanize those, I mean, you've got to do that from a, a long, a large distance, and it's, it's, it's tough, so, yeah, residents trying to take care of a skunk is difficult, that's why we should let the professionals that handle these things, and actually have the equipment to deal with it, do their job.
I agree with Councilor Arnold's letting the traps out, because we did that for a long time here in the city, and it seemed to work, I don't think it'd hurt also to have a list of phone numbers and people that could remove skunks and take care of these animals, if they wish to go that way, at least they'd know somebody, a lot of people are willing to pay some, if they could know who to call and have it taken care of, they just don't know where to turn and what to do, when they've got skunks and raccoons and things around, so, any other comments or things on this?
I think that sounds pretty reasonable, it's kind of a middle of the road, like we're trying to help, I, I agree with that, so I, I think that's decent.
I agree with that, too.
That's two votes from River Glen, so that's, that's pretty good, that's
And I'm not saying that we would never do anything, you know, if we had a major issue, we, we could try and help.
I think Brayden, comment, Mayor?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve Brooks.
No, I was just pointing out that Bart was trying to make a comment, I mean, I agree with what's being said, I think, we, we find this all the time, this is just on a much smaller scale, but people always turn to the cities and think we can solve their problems, you know, whether it's a hillside, or a tornado, and all that kind of stuff, and, and we can't, really, I mean, we can't go onto people's property, because then all of a sudden, we assume that liability, which we don't want to do, and it gets us into bigger and bigger issues, so, I think Chief Brinkman and the mayor pointed that out, that they're exactly spot on, from the legal perspective, we don't want to go down these routes here.
Yeah, Mayor?
Stevens, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things, oh, actually, several things, I was with Brayden Mitchell after chapel services, when the resident approached him and me with the concern, and I pointed out the difference between domesticated companion animals and wildlife, that we don't do wildlife, now, in the presentation that Chief Brinkman did before, when he asked the council if they could stop this service, he threw out some, some, some numbers, and that was, it costs, at that time, the number he used was high $158, $160 per, by, as an average, for the time, the euthanasia and disposal, and so, there is a, you know, and it, and it can get more than that, the more complicated, of course, now, he also mentioned, and that they had loaned out traps, and, and then, he made a comment, and I'd like a follow-up, chief, if, that nothing had been, none of them had been returned, is, is that the case, that, I mean, we've loaned them out, and they've not been returned? Hopefully, you have lists and names of who's got them, right?
In the past, in the past, we've had a problem or two with a trap that hasn't been returned, but, like I told our animal control now, PM, she keeps a record of every time we, we loan a trap out, so that, that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you, now, you, you do have names of the people who've got them, right? Yep. Okay, thank you, now, that said, a few years ago, I had extended family who lived in Sandy, and they had raccoon issues, and Sandy, at that time, now, this was a couple years ago, was charging $50 deposit for a trap, and then $50 per animal, so that, now, now they don't do that, because in one case, the gentleman got a mom and the babies, and captured them live, and he drove them down to the animal shelter to be euthanized, now, I've, I spoke with DWR, a representative, and it is illegal to transport wildlife, so, you have to either euthanize it or release it, you cannot transport it, that takes a special licensed person, or a DWR officer, now, that said, if we are going to be in the business of loaning traps, a couple things need to transpire, and that is, is a very hefty deposit, now, if I remember right, chief, I do recall that traps were upwards, that we were using upwards of 120 plus each, now, that said, loaning out, being in that business of, you know, a deposit would be absolutely appropriate, also, where are we going to start with the wildlife, because not everybody has bats, but there are hard people, there are bad issues in this area, are we going to deal with that? I mean, what, where, where does this stop, if, if we get a resident who complains, are we going to try to accommodate, it, it opens us Pandora's box? Also, I broached the subject on, on terminating the, you know, instead of euthanizing, of course, a gun is not an option, but using my crossbow, and of course, I was informed that crossbows or arrows, or whatever, discharging them has, is the same as a, as a firearm, and so, that's, that's not really a viable option, now, recently, I have had a a neighbor who has dealt with a feral cat issue in our, in our, in our area, at the east end of Donna Smith's old lot, she had a lot of fruit trees that would fall, and that's, those fruit trees became a food source for rats and mice, and then, of course, there was the cats that came in for that food source, and so, there was this rather large feral cat population, she, working, you know, working with Bonnie to a limited degree, trapped those animals, either, you know, capture, neuter, and release, or adopt, and got the, the population under control, so that there are still feral cats there, but they don't like to use the word feral, because it has some negative connotations, so they use community cats, now, she, and this is in my neighborhood, now, mayor indicated that he'd seen raccoons this year for the first time in, what, 50 years you've lived here, but she pointed out that even though their feral cat population is, is all neutered, that lives in their area, and, and by the way, cats are territorial, and they will coexist with raccoons, that she has to pull in the food, because she has cat, skunks, and raccoons that come up and will eat the food in the evening, as was brought out, and I says, well, where are these coming from, because there's fields in, in some of those areas, she goes, they come up through the storm drain, they, that's how they transfer themselves, they work their way up through the grates, and that's how they are, are, are there, and so, they, they get around, and subterraneously, sub, subterraneously, anyways, the, the point is, is that, yes, we, we see a lot of the, of those animals, but they're wildlife, they do what they do, and, and that's not what, a business that we need to be in to manage that, or euthanize, or kill them, now, I kind of think that the whole city might have a, have an issue at some point or another, not just the River Glen, now, there's a couple of local people down there, yeah, they've probably seen them, they live next to the woods, they complain about it, they've got the ear of at least one or two city council members who bring it to the city, if we go into this business of trapping wildlife, this needs to be made public on the front page of the newsletter, so the whole city can this needs to be made public on the front page of the newsletter. So the whole city can take advantage of this service that the city is offering. Not just the complainers who live where they have the ear of, of council members after church. Well, the point being is, is that I think we could make, uh, if we went into this business, we could make that uh, animal control person full-time and maybe even hire a second one if, if we wanted to get into this business. Because there would be that much, um, demand if we made it, if, if, if the Riverdale citizens knew that we were in the business of handling their wildlife issues. Boy, would we be popular. I don't think that's an area we need to be. Um, plus as, as Mr. Brooks brought up, if we start getting involved in, because this is private property, we're opening up a real can of worms between what goes on in one person's private property to another person's private property. Now, they might live in the woods. It might be, um, you know, it might be quote unquote, public land, not Riverdale, like the, like the wooded areas. I don't know. Is that railroad land or is that park trails land? Who knows? But it's, it's, that's not an area that we want to go. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Any other comments on this topic? Do we have a consensus with council members just to have some traps available? Or you want to even want to go that far? Any thoughts on that?
With a, with some hefty deposit fee?
Yeah, let, let them, we'll let the police department work that out, animal control, as far as whether how they sign up.
If, if you wanted a fee on the traps, we would have to add a fee to the consolidated fee schedule at some point in time. I don't, I don't personally have an issue letting people borrow them without the fee. Uh, but if it's something you think it would be important, we can look at adding a fee to the fee schedule.
Is, is, is it a euphemistic term to say deposit versus fee or is that on the, on the schedule? Is that, is that the same?
The, the problem that we, when, when, when we go to a fee, we're going to have a fee, then I'm going to require that they come here to the office, they pay the fee and they have a receipt in hand before they recall us. Because most time, Bonnie would go out and if you knew Bonnie, she had part of gold, nobody ever paid.
No, and, and we've never gotten traps back either.
So we, we have a system in place to track our traps if we're going to loan those out. But if you feel we need a fee, we would need to add that in.
I'm in support of making them available without a fee.
Yeah, me too.
Do we have a consensus with the council on that?
So that's, that's making the traps available without a fee, right? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
And I'm with that too, but I, I think that we need to get it out of the police department's realm. This, this needs to be something that's not, that's, that's, they, they shouldn't have anything to do with this. They got a bigger fish to fry.
Let's let the city staff work that.
Well, we, uh, we do supervise animal control, so they do fall under our umbrella.
Well, if you're volunteering.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're fine. It, it's all going to be handled by Kim. If you haven't got Kim, Kim's incredible. She's very organized. She's very detailed. She's got twenty-five years of experience. Uh, she's worked for big cities. She, she will manage this well. We'll make sure we recover our traps. I, I don't foresee a problem.
Looks to me, Chief, like we got four council members, uh, far as the consent, uh, with, uh, Councilor Ellis. That's a, that's a yes, right? Thumbs up. Okay. I know there's at least four in favor of, uh, uh, letting the trips, traps out without fees. So we'll just go ahead and do that. I think there's one that probably prefers a fee, so. Does that, uh, take care of things, Mr. Brooks, on this item?
I do believe so.
Okay. Okay, let's move on next to discretionary business. Any discretionary business for this meeting?
You're going to have Bill talk a little bit about himself or introduce himself?
That's right. You want to take a minute, Bill, and introduce yourself?
Well, um, I, I think the first question is, uh, on, on everyone's mind, and I, I think I'd like to just address it right off the top, if that's okay. Um, I know that Joe is looking at me and thinking, I, I thought only clowns wore, uh, bow ties. And, uh, um, I'm not a clown and I do wear a bow tie. I actually wear it to, um, I kind of remember, uh, the council member that I worked with down in Beaumont, Texas, who was a very stylish gentleman. He was an attorney and, uh, he looked really good and, and, uh, always dressed to the nines and he regularly wore a bow tie. And he, he looked way better in it than I did, but I thought, man, if he can pull it off, I want to see what I can get away with. So. Look, I, I'm happy to be here. This is an exciting time in Riverdale. Um, it's, it's, it's an exciting time for me to come on board and try to help out where I can. Uh, I met with Stacy earlier today and she's, she's awesome. Uh, everyone that I've met and worked with, uh, I'm just super excited to get out there and, and get to work with everybody. Um, a little bit about myself, I, um, I've been working for and around cities for, um, fifteen years now and it's something that, it's, it's not something that, uh, my life, I would have expected in my life. Um, I, I went to, uh, the University of Utah and got a bachelor's degree in architecture. And I thought I was going to be an architect, but the sad truth was that I, I learned in architecture school that while I love it and I think it's beautiful and, and amazing, it turns out I don't have a real strong, um, design capability. And if you're going to be an architect, you have to be good at design. So that was kind of a sad moment for me. But the good news was that I was, uh, able to get into the, uh, School of Urban Planning, which is, uh, adjacent to and connected with the School of Architecture. And, um, I, I pursued a master's degree in urban planning and, and that has really made a big difference in my life. Um, and so it's amazing to me how things come together for the ultimate good. And I, I've learned to take that long view of things and, and allow um, my life to take me places that I wouldn't have expected because it's always, always, always been awesome. And that, uh, has led me to work at Riverdale as well. Um, I have worked at, uh, different places, uh, around the country. Uh, my first job out of school actually was at the City of Saratoga Springs. And, um, that was in, in, um, twenty seventeen. It was my first real job out of school and I, um, ended up going from there down to Texas through a, a set of circumstances that are, are lengthy and miraculous and wonderful. And being in Texas was good and, uh, was enabled us to withstand or, or hide out from the, the, uh, financial crises that were, uh, gripping most of the rest of the nation in twenty seven, two thousand and seven through, you know, two thousand and ten, when everybody started really coming out of that. Um, and, um, you know, as, as the course of my career went, I was looking for a way to get back closer to home. My parents are getting older and I'm concerned about them and wanting to be closer to them. Um, at the time they were in Idaho and, uh, in Rexburg and, um, that took me to Oregon and I, I worked there for a, a very short time. Uh, it didn't work out there in Oregon like I hoped it would. Um, but again, uh, things seemed to work out for the best in the long term. Um, we ended up moving to Oregon and, uh, when I was at Oregon, I, I was aware of a job opportunity in Pleasant View and, uh, came down and, and started working in Pleasant View and then, um, excited to have the opportunity to come and work at Riverdale. Um, as for my personal life, I, I have two wonderful children from my first marriage and I'm looking to adopt, uh, a little girl that, uh, is the daughter of my wife now. Um, her name is Diana Smith. And, uh, if there's, Diana Smith COVID. And if there's one thing I can point to in my life that, uh, is the, the best thing I've ever done, it's, uh, it's definitely marrying her. And, uh, I have nothing but pride in my children. My son, my oldest son, my only son, is, uh, twenty-three. He is, uh, attending Utah Valley. He's, uh, wanting to be an English teacher. He teaches at the MTC. Um, and, uh, also works, uh, with some online sales and tech support for, uh, um, an online group that does, uh, after-school homework and extra packets and things like that for school kids. Um, his wife is, he's married and his wife is, uh, studying social work. She's getting, pursuing a master's degree in social work right now. And our daughter Elise is, um, eighteen. She just turned eighteen. She graduated this last year from Morgan High. Um, she's attending Utah Valley, um, starting this fall down in Utah Valley as well and, uh, she's, uh, looking at doing something in the medical field and, uh, I'm super proud of her as well. Um, and then the, the daughter that I live with, she, uh, will turn nine in January. Um, her name's Ally and she is a fireball. She just never stops moving. She is the sweetest little thing in the whole world and she has me wrapped right around her little finger. And I wouldn't have it any other way. She's a sweetheart and, uh, we've just been best friends ever since we met a couple of years ago. Um, that's pretty much me. I mean, I, I, I tell people that I'm the world's most boring human. I, I have, uh, been in a lot of places and done a lot of things and, um, I, I just, I, I love life. It's great. Um, I have a philosophy when it comes to city management and that is mostly to just get out of the way and let, uh, the city run itself. Um, we have a great crew that I'm excited to be a part of. Um, the, uh, police chief, the fire chief, all of the department heads, uh, Mike, Steve, everyone, um, I, I met, um, um, who was it that I met with you, uh, Mayor? But we went to the, um, we went to the, the recycle facility. It was you and, um,
Rashawn Douglas.
Sean, and then who was with Sean? Who was with you? I don't, I, I, I'm not great with names. I, I would forget my own name if people didn't shout it at me all day.
You're fine. It was Norm Farah.
Norm, thank you. I should have remembered Norm. Now it's an easy one to remember. Um, it's, uh, we had a, a great experience, um, and, and it was good to get to know these guys. Um, they helped me find my way when I was lost. Of course, they were lost too, but we found our way together. So, uh, if that's, uh, off to a good start there. Um, and you know, my, my job really is to help facilitate these awesome, um, department heads and make sure that they have the tools that they need so that their employees can succeed and that, uh, Riverdale can stay, uh, a community of distinction. You know, it's, it's well-known throughout the region what Riverdale has going for it. And, um, I, I'm just excited to be a part of it. I, I can't tell you how thrilled and tickled I am, uh, to be, uh, have this honor of working with you guys and, and serving you and, and making sure that, uh, it just stays awesome.
Thank you, Bill. We, uh, we're looking forward to having you here starting Monday. Uh, that office has been empty for quite some time, about six, seven months, except for just a short time in between, but, uh, we're looking forward to having you there and hopefully we can get things, uh, it, it'll be good. Hopefully be a good experience for all of us. We're excited to have you and I think you bring a lot of good things to the table. So we welcome you and your family. Uh, I'd just like to say a little bit about Steve Brooks too. Steve has, uh, uh, filled in, he was appointed as our acting city administrator, which he's still doing. And, uh, we sincerely appreciate what he's done. This has been a tough year. I know Steve's been working up the final details on that landslide lawsuit and between that and COVID and Rogers', uh, illness and, uh, and what went with it, it's been, it's been pretty tough. So it'll be good to have you here. Maybe we just kind of get, get back on even keel again. I think as long as COVID's around, it's, it's probably going to be a challenge for us, but they're hoping for some vaccines out here now, maybe December, sometime in December. So start for some of our public safety people and that, get that, maybe we'll get that turned around. But, uh, just wanted to thank Steve. Steve's done a great job. He's, uh, he's been wearing two hats and, uh, I know things have been busy for him. Uh, for the record, uh, talked with Cody and Stacy and I know Stacy, I think she got with Cody and but we were able to give him a little bit of some of that performance pay that we were talking about. Wasn't very much, Steve, I know, but, uh, hopefully he was able to help and, uh, let you know, we appreciate your efforts and what you're doing. And I think you probably continue maybe to help the transition with Bill. Hopefully that's, uh, that's a good relationship there. So, uh, do we have any other discretionary tonight? I'd like to ask, uh, Bill and Steve Brooks and Cody, if you stay on just a minute, we can set a time to get together next day or two. So. The rest of you, have a good evening. Thanks for being here. Chief. See ya. Thanks. Chief, chief?
Thank you very much, guys.
Just a quick question. I don't have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We don't, we didn't do that. Thank you.
Talking. Bye.
I'm glad.
Bye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Shelly.